Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here for today's regular county council. At the Basque County meeting this morning, Thursday, September twenty fifth, we'd like to call this meeting to order at nine thirty AM, and we will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight, traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. We will start with the approval of the agenda, and I understand there may be a few additions with the council's blessing. We are looking at an item for enclosed advice from officials. And we're proposing to look at that as a six point one and moving the current six point one to six point two. We also have a second item that was forwarded to council as well. An emergent item would be considered enclosed as well, and it would be intergovernmental. Twelve point two if council is willing, and that would be for a meeting. Do we have any other additions or deletions?
Can you repeat the first one?
Sure, the first one would be an enclosed item, advice from officials. It would be placed as six point one, the current six point one would move to six point two. The current one is listed here as six point one, so the item that we're asking to add would need to be discussed prior to six point two. Prior to the current six point one, that we would like to move to six point two.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you. Is that okay, councillor Wallock? Anybody else? Please go ahead.
Seven point one.
We'll get to that one. Yeah, we'll definitely get there, I'll mark it now. But there's no other further additions, deletions, or changes. Okay, we will then move to go around the table for council to discuss which items they would wish to discuss. We will start with what I know of, two point one, five point one, six point one, which is new as the addition if was approved, six point two, seven point one, eight point two, twelve point one, and twelve point two if approved. Are there any other further items? Go ahead, please councillor Hall.
I think maybe between councillor Mins and I, an update for council on the meeting yesterday. I'm just looking for what letter under ten that is.
Ten point one W.
Are you okay with between us?
All right, go ahead, please councillor Chamsick. Eight point one A. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to run through those again. Oh, go please councillor.
Ten point one B.
Ten point one B is in Bob. I think that's everybody for now. All right, so I'm just going to run through those ones again. Two point one, five point one, six point one if approved, moving six point, the current six point one to six point two. Seven point one, eight point one A, eight point two, ten point one B, ten point one W, twelve point one, and twelve point two if approved. Councillor Chamsick, or no, pardon me, councillor Anderson has put a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended and discussed. Yeah, all right, we're ready for that, all those in favor? And I see no opposed for eight and oh. Thank you. I also forgot to mention that councillor Capitanic will be joining us here later this morning. We can move forward to five point one, which is on page ten. Your agenda package. If I can find it, there it is. Alrighty, so we were given an email a little while ago, and this was to discuss having a meeting at the RMA with the Eastern Alberta District Senior Leadership. And it was to discuss the Provincial Policing Service Agreement, as well as the police funding model, and any of the other topics of importance to Athabasca County. So this is put to the floor for us to discuss and provide administration with traction. So I'll turn it over to the floor. Does anybody have any? Pretty quiet place. So would we like to put a motion forward that council would like to consider this meeting at the RMA for the new council to come forward? Please go ahead councillor Hall.
I'd move that Athabasca County pass on the meeting this time. With the reason that I think, you know, these folks are quite busy, we've all been at RMA, we see the lineups coming and going. And I think we need to show them the respect of not wasting their time when we haven't over the last year had a lot of discussions around hot burning issues that are, that we've taken positions on. And given that we haven't had those discussions, I just think it's it's considered and respectful of those folks to, you know, to pass this time. And if we have things that are items that we discuss as a group on a regular basis, that really do rise to the concern of needing to talk to them, then that's the appropriate time to have a meeting, but a meeting for the sake of seeing how many bars and stripes are on their shoulders doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Does there any discussion? Go ahead, please councillor, deputy Mins.
I guess I'm just wondering if any councillors want, have anything to discuss regarding meeting with the RCMP instead of just throwing it away, we can actually find out if somebody wants to discuss something with them, or even even having a quick meet and greet just to, just to present to Athabasca County and and talk highly of, which we always do, talk highly about our staff sergeants and and all that. I would be up for a meeting. There's a couple of things I would like to actually discuss with them. One being, being the possibly the incentive or initiative of the Protec DNA just to actually have a quick conversation with the with their administration and that, and I think that would be valuable. So I'd be for going in and having a meeting.
Thank you, go ahead, please councillor Anderson.
Yeah, the email that we had received that was included in our committee of the whole agenda said that the village of Boyle had responded that they'd like a meeting to discuss staffing and high incidence of theft. I'm just wondering, are they requesting a meeting during RMA or Alberta Munis? And would there be benefit to the county sending a representative to their meeting if they're having one to show support on a more regional basis, instead of us just scheduling a separate meeting?
Thank you. I think for, if I just may weigh in here as well, when we're looking at a situation of a new council coming forward for a new term, I think it's important to provide the opportunities and plan for those opportunities that they may wish to take on, and it can always be easily adjusted and rescheduled or canceled if the new council chooses to go that direction. So I would be voting against the motion at this time, as I am also in support of planning these meetings and putting our representatives that we have at the new table in a position for success. So that's where I'm at there. Is there anybody else? Okay, and so, I'm sorry, I didn't write down your motion, councillor Hall, do you remember?
To, basically to decline the opportunity for a meeting at this time.
Okay, to decline. All right.
However, however Ms Blair has recorded it is fine for me.
And I'm sorry.
However, Ms Blair has recorded it, I think will be adequate.
Did you get it, Ms Blair? Would you like to, would you mind reading it back what you've put down, please?
Moved by councillor Hall that Athabasca County declined the meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. So are we ready?
I'd provide the final word if everybody else is done.
Yeah, you can go ahead and speak, please, go ahead. I think everybody has their hands down, so.
Mostly just to provide the additional thought that if there are things that as a council we want to discuss, they should be things that are councils' issues, it's not about our individual stuff, and if we have those items, they should properly come here as a discussion item through an RFD first, where we take a position and then go forward. And, you know, the reminder is that we have not done that, we don't have council positions, and and I think it's important that, you know, we talk about the next group of folks coming in. I think we need time to make sure that they have the opportunity to establish their own points of view, and we don't send people in there coming off the script of the county's actual message, so anyway.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please deputy Mins.
We did have a discussion regarding what I had mentioned there, Protec DNA, and we actually had a motion in the community of the whole that will, should be coming to council here anytime soon regarding Protec DNA of the initiative and that, and I think moving that forward to the to the and that's an initiative not by one person, that's an initiative by council to move this forward due to the fact that it's very, everybody's being very receptive to it. So I think we could put ourselves maybe on the map a little bit by on the forefront by actually moving this forward, but having a discussion with with the RCMP has actually been discussed in this council chambers already. Thank you for going off the script.
Thank you. I think we're ready for the motion if I'm not mistaken. All right, so all those in favor to decline the meeting? One, two, three, and those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Five and three. That has been defeated. Would you like to go ahead, please councillor Mins?
I'd like to recommend that we ask administration to try to set up a meeting at the RMA in November with the RCMP if all possible.
Is there any discussion?
Could we clarify what specific issues we're going with?
I think I said it here, to discuss how the, how our services are going through the RCMP with Athabasca County. How things are moving forward very well. And the great meetings that we have with our staff sergeants and that, and also to discuss a little bit on the Protec DNA initiative. I think putting that out to to the commander of the RCMP in our district or region is a great way of moving forward. That's, that's what I think. So, and if anybody else has anything else you want to discuss, let's, let's throw it out there, please.
Please go ahead, Mr Gerlock.
I think it was also reported at that meeting that they stopped an individual doing a hundred and twenty eight kilometers an hour in a school zone. And they gave him a ticket and then sent him on his merry way. I mean, if you're, if you're inebriated and you're stopped, you, you don't get to get back in your vehicle and take off again. And there needs, there needs to be some regulation, they should not be turning somebody loose who's offended the law to that extent. And I think that needs to be discussed. That person should be, their vehicle should be taken off, the road impounded immediately, and it blows my mind that that doesn't happen, they just turn them loose.
Yeah, so for legislation as well. And I also believe, as they mentioned in their email, they do have topics that they would like to discuss, and as I had mentioned earlier, there's going to be possibly new faces at this table. We know for sure of one new face that will have at our table. And so, you know, these opportunities are valuable, in my opinion. We did have an opportunity to meet with the RCMP when they had, they were here in Athabasca with, at the town chambers. It's extremely informative, and any new councillor coming aboard to have that information, I think, is extremely valuable. And then, of course, there is time between when the new term begins and when the RMA begins to establish any further ideas or opinions that they would like to have for that meeting. And do we have anyone else that would like to? Thank you. I also believe too, the Protec DNA initiative is an important one, it's been, I've been asked about it several times, just going through and having that conversation with people who are concerned of theft and looking for ways to help combat that. So I think that's a great idea as well, then thank you deputy Redmans for mentioning it. And if we're ready for the question, all those in favor of having that meeting? One, two, three, four, five, six, and opposed? Two, that is carried, thank you. All right, so I believe we're looking for a motion to go in close. Councillor Chamsick would like to ask, put the motion forward that we go into close, all those in favor? And I see no opposed, that's eight and oh. We're ready to go? Alrighty, welcome back, everyone. We are currently at six point two of our agenda. Just before we begin, being that we had a public hearing as per section one eighty four of the MGA, councillors who were absent from that public hearing must abstain from voting on this particular bylaw. And a councillor who was absent for part of the public hearing can also choose to abstain. Therefore, we have councillor Gerlock who will be abstaining, we have councillor Wallock who will be abstaining, as well as councillor Capitanic will also abstain. And of course, this is where we're at with the bylaw zero one five twenty twenty five Skeleton Lake Estates Area Structure Plan and bylaw zero one six twenty twenty five Landuse Amendment of part of Northwest thirteen sixty five nineteen, West of the Fourth. Is there a motion? Go ahead councillor Anderson.
Move to table bylaw zero one five two zero two five and bylaw zero one six two zero two five.
Okay, thank you. Did everyone catch that particular tabling motion? There is no discussion. So we will go to the vote, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, and I see no opposed, so that's six and oh. Thank you. The next item we have for discussion is seven point one, the Financial Variance Report. It's on page two twenty two, starts on page two twenty two of your agenda package. Who would like to begin? I believe you asked for this to be on councillor Hall.
I have a number of questions if, that I think might better, better just to go back and forth with asking, but I the first one is, is just really through the chair, is there, is there no did I miss a summary statement that kind of consolidates all the various, like, these are various departmental budgets, but is there is there a summary that consolidates it all into a single page so we can get an idea of the consolidated picture of the organization? Like a consolidated statement that we can see every department line by, not every line, but every
No, you read, there is, actually, we just discussed that before I came, that there is no summary of the major changes that were increases or decreases, but we will be, that will be implemented during next report.
Thank you.
Not here, we could this is probably one of the last ones at this council, we'll see, we'll try to get something out to you that summarizes in, on the one page, all accounts together. And we'll just, we'll do it and send it out by email.
Awesome, thank you.
And the reason is, of course, some of them are over budget and some of them are under budget, and some of it relates to inter-account transfers, and really this, like, I don't feel the council should have to build that. With the specifically on line, page two twenty six and line two twenty two thirty assessor fees, do we have a sense whether this item will whether these expenses will grow based on the number of tax assessment appeals that are outstanding? Do we get charged after?
I'm happy to comment, I think we budgeted for a larger, larger amount of appeals than we have at present. So I believe that we should have adequate budget and surplus budget unless something goes wrong, but we have, I can't recall, twenty three or twenty four appeals, and I believe we budgeted for more.
Okay, thank you, thank you. The costing center on page two, two hundred and thirty two is significantly under budget for the year, year to date, we're at about twelve percent of the budgeted spend. Can we just have an understanding of why this is so far below budget, given the time of the year and the season?
Yes, you read councillor Hall. There will be a transfer of salaries from common services over to the cemetery, which will be, which will increase that budget.
And then, when I was reviewing cost center thirty three forty, which is the community transportation on page two hundred thirty six, this one is significantly under budget, and so I just wondered if we could have a bit of an explanation for why that's, you know, well, you know, two hundred and nine thousand dollars under its current budget and whether or not we've got capital items, capital cash included in the revenue stream? Or if there's some other explanation that I'm just not seeing?
You read, we will look into that bit more detail and get back to council, thank you.
Because there are obviously transfers to reserves, but it's thirty thousand dollars, and that doesn't account for the other two hundred thousand. And I had only, I think, two more, but my worry with that is this really misrepresents the situation when we're two hundred thousand dollars different. And then when the emergency management and Highway sixty three, we're about two thirds of the way through the year, and at ninety five percent of budget, does administration have a plan or? Or. Are we on track in, in assuming nonlinear spending for this to stay within budget by year end? That's on page two hundred forty of the agenda.
One more question. Uh, you read, there are, I guess, a couple of points here. We are still expecting a grant under eighteen forty and. I guess the second thing would be for emergency management, I mean, we budget, but if there is something unexpected, you mean, we're, that we didn't budget for, it could. Increase a little bit more, but I guess the main thing is there that we are expecting the grant come in on their revenue line on, which will change this number.
And so I don't know where the rest of council is, but my personal expectation is when we. Hit near the top of the budget that we need to be bringing back amendments to the budget to, to start funding things that go past that. The last two questions again relate to. Significant changes, the fire protection budget on page two forty-seven, two forty-eight, we're two point six million dollars. Under and just again, given the time in the year. Um, I'm just looking to have confidence in what we're seeing in terms of the performance of the, the organization.
Uh, Reed, there, uh, we're still waiting on the, all the expenses to come in for the fire that happened on E three one there south of, uh. Highway sixty-three to boil, boil fire. Thank you.
Which would not have been in the budget, just for reference. We didn't, we didn't foresee that and budget for that last December, but. Oh, um, the last question, uh, which is the last one, same. Page two fifty-six, the season is winding down on construction. This is our road construction and maintenance and we're again six point two million dollars under budget. Are we? At the end of, at the end of August, are we really that far under budget? This is page two fifty-six, sorry if I didn't say that.
Uh, Reed, there, uh, one item that will be adjustment at the year end will be our depreciation, which will be adjusted in there. Uh, budget at just over three million, so that will increase that significantly.
Um, yeah, I think the theme is really. We, we need a way to have a better sense of. Are we on track? Are we not on track? Are we keeping up? Are we, um, and even depreciation, I'm, I'm not sure. There, there's a, it seems to me with, you know, transfers to common services and shifting back and forth. It, it's sort of inadequate to really be able to have a good grasp of where, how we're performing when. Some items, you know, wages are parked in category one and others are parked in category two, and it's, it's been a long process of trying to get that fixed, and I know. The admin team is working their way, way through it and even, even things like depreciation are tricky because we all know they come, but, but also. Because they, they're not. You know, we just do the lump sums once a year, it, it. Doesn't create the clarity along the way that, that we could do and I, you know, I tend to believe in an era where everything's electronic and on computers, it surely couldn't be that. Challenging to on a quarterly basis, make adjustments for depreciation, just so that we more fairly represent what's actually going on, because I, I mean, today, if someone asked me. How you doing? Are you gonna have a surplus? Are you gonna not? And without going through a hundred pages and trying to add up all the pluses and minuses on the bottom, no idea where we're at.
Yeah.
And not to a fault.
Madam Chair, I. You're preaching to the choir here because I.
I thought you.
Voice this all the time. I hate seeing depreciation in any of our statements. It, it serves no value unless you add it back in. And even transfer to reserve is just, we do that at year end. So to have it show up in your monthly report that we haven't done it yet, so it distorts some of the budgets. Well, the fire one is distorted by seven hundred twenty thousand dollars. That really it's a fictional item. It doesn't tell you where you are with the, how we're doing with the department and where we are with our budget. Those two are just. Financial exercises, but they don't help you with the health of the organization, I think. So we've got some reporting things we can improve.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. On page. Two hundred and sixty, uh, underwater services. It looks like our sale of water is only about. Half of what we were estimating for the year. Just wondering if there's something that's impacted our sale of water. I thought with the. Dryer summer we had, maybe our sales would be up, but it looks like they're not. So just kind of wondering what, because of course. The more water we sell, it, it does impact our budgets.
Well, part of the, I'm happy to comment, I don't know about true volumes, Madam Chair, but part, part of the way the budget was established. Before the new rates were adopted, and so we reduced the rates part of the way through the year, so we would not meet the. The, what we had budgeted, I believe. Yeah, it's three, three dollars per cube lower, basically. So, um, we can bring back true volumes to see where we're at. I'm kind of agree with you. I don't see our, the usage being down this year, but actually, we won't know till the end of the year.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any? Questions? No. Sorry, I turned that microphone off. No, no questions, I see. So do we need a motion? Go ahead, please.
Just to receive this information.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hall would like to receive the Financial Variance Report as information. We're ready for the question. All those in favor? And I see no opposed. That's nine and oh. Thank you. And we are now moving, thank you. We're now moving on to, I believe, Ms. Counselor Chamzick, eight one point A, which is on page two fifty-six of your agenda package, and this is our community event calendars.
On October tenth, all things pending is the Grassline Turkey Trot. If. Uh, things change, it'll be held later on in the year, and then on November twenty-second would be the Grassline Gala. And that's all.
November twenty-second, I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Grassline Gala.
Grassline Gala. And I apologize, it was, thank you for the correction. I said two fifty-six, it's two sixty-five is the page in your agenda. Grassline, all right. Does anybody else have any other events I'd like to add? Yep. Counselor Chamzick is sorting, looking.
There is actually November eighth, um, also a crib tournament at the Atmore Community Center.
Crib tournament at more, do you have a time?
Uh, doors open at nine AM, games start at ten.
Ten AM, thank you. And the Grassline Gala is an evening event starting.
Correct. Uh, details are still being worked up.
Perfect. All right, anybody else? Okay, I don't see. All right, so if we may have a motion, Counselor Chamzick would like to, uh, receive the, uh, October and November. Community event calendars as amended. All those in favor? And I see no opposed, so it's nine and oh, thank you. And then we have the next item up is meeting calendars, eight point two, page two sixty-nine. Of your agenda package. Go ahead, please, Counselor Chamzick.
Um, October seventh, uh, celebrating Rural Women's Conference. November seventh, um, a Northern Lights Executive Meeting. November tenth should be the FCS S meeting, and then through the twenty-sixth and the twenty-eighth would be the FCS S A A Conference.
Twenty-six through the twenty-eighth?
Correct.
Okay. FCS S Conference, thank you. Does anybody else have any additions here? Go ahead, please, Counselor Anderson.
November twenty-fourth will be the next ARMS meeting.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the fans.
Sorry, November twenty-fourth will be the next ARMS meeting at the multiplex.
Okay, ARMS meeting. Alrighty. Um, I also have a couple of additions, just a quick mention, um, September twenty-ninth, there will be an Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee. Menook Area Planning Update with the landowners, um, at one PM, it's a virtual meeting. September thirtieth, I believe that's there. October second, there is an Athabasca, um. Landing Trail Steering Committee Menook Area Planning Update for landowners again, and, uh, virtual meeting at one to two. October third, Community Transportation Meeting at ten AM. And I'm not sure if, um, in the November calendar of, um, being that we will have an organizational meeting coming up, if we might want to remove the initials next to the different committees. In November, until we have an organizational meeting, as called and the committees are decided upon. That's fair. Does anybody else have any? Go ahead, please, Counselor Minz.
Uh, November fifth, there's an Alice meeting. Off your account, remember where it's at. And then. November twenty-six, there's a Athabasca Ownership Council Meeting in Spruce Grove. That starts at nine AM.
All right. Okay, go ahead, please, Counselor Kapitanik.
Um, actually, everyone. We've seen the same information, but if we no longer have member on the Community Computers Committee as a parent of June, we take off the Christmas dinner.
Oh, do we have notice? Okay, I'll have a look at the email, okay? Okay. All right. And is that? We're good. All right, do we have a motion here to accept the council's amended?
I'm just.
Oh, oh, we have one more, okay.
I'm just looking at here on November twentieth. Uh, we're probably, you know, still be at RMA, um, but we have a Regional Collaboration Committee meeting. To read.
Yes, so, um, there, um, will be other members there.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep, good.
Okay. All right, motion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, to receive the, the, uh, October and November meeting calendars as amended, all those in favor? And I see no opposed, thank you, nine and oh. Okay. All right, we are moving to reports. I believe. That is ten point one B Alberta Hub, Counselor Wallach.
Thank you. Um, I had a meeting last Friday with Alberta Hub and. Some of the changes that are coming down from the provincial government with funding, they are not guaranteed funding in the next couple of years, so. Uh, things could be changing on that. The purpose of the group, um. Currently, because they're being funded by the government, they can't lobby the government for anything. It's more of an information group and, um, regional stuff, so. Um, it, changes may be coming. Um, they've also worked on a drone project in the last, uh, year. Which is called the Skyways Project, so they're looking to fly drones out of line of sight, and the federal government is now changing the, um. Regulations on that, uh, coming soon. So they did a, or they. I believe they did a test run last night from Andrew to Vegerville, um, for their first flight on these airways pass, so. Um, it's gonna be really cool to see what happens, so this can affect healthcare, this can, for, you know, pipeline checking, uh, farming, all of the things, so. Um, it's the only place in, in Canada right now doing this testing, so it's, it's a pretty cool project, so, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, that's awesome. Uh, is there where we can follow up with what's happening with the project? Is that through, they will send updates or?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah, that's a cool project. All right, is there, uh, next item up is ten point one W, the Island Lake Waterline Advisory Committee. Leave Deputy Reed Minz or Counselor Hall?
So we had, uh, there's an update meeting the other, uh, on Wednesday. And, uh, the, the, uh, the summary of it that we, you know, my colleague can supplement is, uh, the progress is slow but significant. Uh, they should have some geotech quotes by the end of tomorrow. The big material things that I think would matter to council, um, the Whispering Hill site has been generally okay with Alberta transportation. They're still doing the research on the environmental piece to make sure that it's okay to, to cite exactly where they want, but they do have a bit of. Latitude in terms of its distance from the highway for it to wiggle around a little bit to make that, make that work. The alignment and the costing are still, uh, right near the budgeted amount. Uh, they are roughly on schedule. But what I think is important to know is that in July, Alberta Environment issued some new directives that relate to pipelines. Uh, this is a water pipeline, not an oil pipeline, but it still is impacted. And so there's a few, uh, added requirements that may or may not impact the, uh, progress. One of them is club root testing along the alignment, which seems pretty reasonable. But the other one is, um, uh. What sounds like a little bit of new red tape from the government. I'm not sure if Minister Gally is aware of this or not, but. Related to the, uh, the detailed design drawings and needing approval on that, so there's still. Work to be done by the consultant on figuring out exactly what level of detail is required, uh, in order to determine the speed and timing of, uh. The, this, this additional level of approval from the, uh, from the government, so there may be, uh, opportunity and, uh. Need for council to engage, uh, with, uh, with the minister and. And her office and or engage, um, you know, some third-party resources to help with that, but. None of that is necessary at the moment. It's just, it's something we want to be aware of and keep, um, keep on track so that this doesn't derail the speed. And. That's the, the big stuff. Um, project is going almost according to plan.
Yeah, and just to add in there, I, I've, I heard yesterday that, uh. The land man's going out and, uh. Getting agreements and everything, and that's moving forward, so that's good to hear, and, uh. And everybody still in the booster station, uh, area has been, been picked and, and, uh. And that's going through the environmental reviews and that, so, so environmentally, the, the, uh, study is, is happening, uh. And it's gonna be ongoing through, through the fall here. Which is great news to hear that things are moving forward.
Awesome, thank you. Alrighty, appreciate that. And I think we are through with our reports, so we won't need a motion for that. Um, but we will be moving forward on our agenda to go into close for our closed session. Do we have a motion? Counselor Cromwell would like to move that council goes into close, in closed session, all those in favor? And I see no opposed, nine and oh, thank you. Good to go. Thank you. We've just come out of closed and we have two motions to make on twelve point one. Counselor Chamzick would like, uh, counsel to authorize the CAO and Reeve to enter into an agreement regarding multiplex funding. All those in favor? And opposed. Seven and two, leave, seven and two. Alrighty. The other item, twelve point two, Deputy Reed Minz would like for council to direct administration to request a meeting for council. At the RMA, November RMA with transportation and economic corridors. All those in favor? And I see no opposed. Awesome, nine and oh, and just before we adjourn, I just wanted to, I should have said this at the beginning, but congratulations to our counselors here that have been acclaimed. And we'll be coming back, so Counselor Kapitanik, congratulations, and also Deputy Reed Minz. Congratulations, and would also like to extend that congratulations to our town of Athabasca for the counselors that have been acclaimed there, and wish all other candidates good luck. We will officially adjourn the meeting at ten fifty-five. Thank you.